Okay.
Little Maria.
Let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council Meeting of October 3rd, 2017. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Here.
Councilwoman King?
Here.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Here.
Sir, Councilwoman Rinning.
And I'd like to add, due to some family illness, Councilwoman Rinning is not able to be with us tonight. So, keep your prayers with her tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I'll note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. I'd like to ask Pastor Brad Davis if he would come to the podium and lead our invocation. He is pastor at Antioch Baptist Church in Bristol, Virginia. If you would, stand with me, please, and we'll have the invocation followed by the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me say how much I appreciate the work that you do here. No one but preachers and politicians put themselves in a place to be loved and cursed by the same people. And I'll tell you what, I appreciate the job you're doing. Let's bow in prayer. Father, we love you. We thank you for the Lord Jesus Christ, who has loved us and gave himself for us. And Fathers, we bow in your presence now. You have ordained human government and given us the privilege here in America to have such a republic and a democracy as we do. We see it in action right here tonight, and we're honored that we can be a part of such a country. And the free-market system, Lord, that has made us what we are. Father, I'm very much aware in my heart that Bristol could be hurting like the folks out in Las Vegas are. We have events here that's as large as that or even more, and some of those tragedies could happen here. And I just pray that you will keep your hand on us and put your hand on us. Your angels, may they be around us. I pray for those dear folk out there, that the blessings of God will be upon them and encourage their hearts and strengthen them and help them during this time of grief. I pray you'll give us wisdom tonight. Lord, give these folks the wisdom they need. The Lord giveth wisdom, Proverbs 2 says, and out of his mouth comes knowledge and understanding. And we're very much aware, Father, that all wisdom, knowledge, understanding comes from you. And you tell us if we ask of God, you give to all men liberally. And so, we ask, and we believe you'll do that. Bless each one that's in attendance. May you be honored, and may your blessings be upon these that serve in this city, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to join me in the pledge? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Sawyer, do you have any agenda items to be changed?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
All right. We have two proclamations and one recognition on tonight's agenda. First is the Fire Prevention Week proclamation, designating October 9th to 15th as Fire Prevention Week. And I'd like to ask Councilman Chad King if he would read the proclamation. Assistant Fire Chief Jack Spurgeon is in attendance to address council on the educational activities offered during this week by our fire department.
Sorry, I've forgotten my glasses tonight, so I hope I get everything right here. Whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas U.S. fire departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78 percent of all U.S. fire deaths. Whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions. And whereas many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely. With people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and the know-how to quickly and safely escape a fire situation. And whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household. And whereas practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas Bristol Fire Rescue personnel are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through the prevention and protection of education. And whereas Bristol residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas in 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," planned "Two Ways Out" effectively serves to educate the Bristol residents about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now, therefore, Mayor Jack Young of Bristol, Tennessee does hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week in Bristol, Tennessee. And he urges all people of Bristol to develop a home escape plan with all members of their household and practice it twice a year. And to participate in the public safety activities and efforts of the Bristol Fire Rescue during Fire Prevention Week in 2017, this third day of October 17th. Mayor Jack Young.
I'd like to thank council for their continued support, as well as City Manager's Office, city departments that continue to help us in our efforts for our public education. Plus, we'd like to thank the community for always being proactive with all the public information that we give out there and being proactive in wanting information regarding safety practices, both at the workplace and at the home. So, we continue to get that information out because we know that our home fires continues to be our most costly when it comes to fire fatalities. So, we promote that year-round, not just through Fire Prevention Week. And we have already started with activities with the schools this week. I know they're out of school next week, so we've met with the school system so that they can schedule for the month of October for us to be in the schools this entire month. And we'll have open house on October the 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00, at our central fire station on Bluff City Highway. We'll have refreshments and a lot of activities and a lot of safety tips and be given as well. And a lot of prevention information will be available. As always, we do continue year-round with our smoke installation, smoke alarm installation program, which gives them another added advantage and gives us an opportunity to be in these homes and to stress the importance of planning "two ways out" and making their fire escape plan. So, again, thank you for your continued support and hope to see all of you October 14th at our central fire station.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a proclamation designating the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Bristol, Tennessee. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Fire Robin if she would read the proclamation. Karen Boyd, Sullivan County Family Justice Center, Donna Mix, Abuse Alternatives, and I think a couple of others might be with us this evening to accept the proclamation.
Please, Debbie, come up to...
Oh, thank you. Whereas domestic violence transcends racial, ethnic, religious, and socioeconomic borders, and its perpetrators harm their victims, endanger children, traumatize families, and threaten our communities. And whereas each year, hundreds of thousands of Tennesseans call for police assistance in domestic violence-related incidents. And dozens of Tennessee's women have lost their lives due to domestic violence. And whereas it is the leading cause of injury to women between the ages of 15 and 45, more than rape, theft, and automobile accident combined. And whereas domestic violence follows a pattern of assault that devastates an individual's dignity, security, and humanity. And whereas children who are abused too often become adults who inflict violence on others, spurring a tragic cycle of violence that must be stopped. And whereas breaking this vicious and criminal cycle requires not only the strength of survivors, but also the support and participation of community members. And whereas communities through our state have responded through domestic violence prevention programs, crisis shelters, counseling, and other support services. And Tennessee's hospitals, clinics, and healthcare facilities also provide crucial roles and services for battered women seeking aid for injuries and associated medical problems. And whereas it is often said that the family is the nucleus of civilization. And Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to reflect on the responsibilities of communities and citizens to build healthy, thriving families free from the threat of violence. Now, therefore, Jack Young, Mayor of City of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Bristol. And encourages citizens to educate themselves on the seriousness of domestic violence and the prevalence of this epidemic in our lives this third day of October 2017.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council people, thank you very much for having us here today. I'm here with Debbie Richmond, who serves on our steering committee at the Family Justice Center, and of course, she's a lieutenant at your police department here in Bristol. She's off the clock now, but wanted to come and offer her support tonight. And Donna Mix, who's the executive director for your domestic violence service provider here, which is Abuse Alternatives. You all had me a few months ago to come in and speak about the Family Justice Center project, and we're all honored to be here tonight to thank you for this proclamation, to thank you for acknowledging that domestic violence is a problem here and that it's something that you all are willing to look at. Your proclamation encourages our citizens to educate themselves about the prevalence of domestic violence. And so, I did my research today and just wanted to update you all on the most recent numbers. Tennessee, the CDC has now named the fourth worst state in the nation where women are most likely to be murdered by intimate partners. We were down to number six last year, and now we're back up to number four. In Sullivan County, last year, we had 1,827 domestic violence-related crimes reported to law enforcement. And here in Bristol, your law enforcement agency responded to 388 such calls. Donna Mix's Business Abuse Alternatives provided services for over 1,200 victims of domestic violence in this area. This is an epidemic. It is a problem, and we thank you all for acknowledging this isn't an us-and-them thing. Family violence really gets into our community, and it affects all of us. And it's not something that we can continue to turn our backs to and close our eyes to. As part of the Family Justice Center, it has been wonderful for me to work with the agencies like your police department, Abuse Alternatives, our district attorney, and the people in this community who do recognize this problem. And we thank you that you're standing with us and joining us in that. So, thank you very much. We're going to continue to work hard. We want all the victims and survivors of family violence in this area to know that we're coming for them. And we want all of the perpetrators of family violence to know that we're coming for them in a different way. Thanks. Thank you.
Next, we would like to publicly recognize Ms. Tara Music and the Finance Department for receiving a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. This is the 14th consecutive year that the city of Bristol, under the leadership of Ms. Music, has received this prestigious award. Ms. Music, would you like to offer any further insights?
I just want to thank council and other departments for their support in preparing the document. We are starting to do that again this year. And we also work very closely with BTS and the Board of Education, so I got to thank Gary Lilly and his group. And we're trying to get the certificate for 15th year.
Excellent. Congratulations. We have no presentations or public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to Appearance of Citizens. I do not have anyone on the list, but if you are here and... Let me go through the regular print notes, so I stick to my notes. Next on our agenda is Appearance of Citizens. This section provides an opportunity to address public, to address city council in the public on any matter that is not printed on the agenda. A response will not likely be made at this time, since in most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to the city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to read them or to represent them. I provided a list of individuals desiring to speak to city council this evening, but as I've mentioned, I don't have anyone there. So, does anyone else wish to address council this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to our appointments. We have one appointment to be made to a commission this evening, and that is for Community Development Advisory Committee. We will consider this appointment, which will fill an unexpired term of office ending April 30, 2019. The candidate is Tiffany Walden. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and pass them to the city manager where it will be read aloud. I do appreciate Mrs. Walden getting involved. She's currently in this year's Lead Bristol class, and I've had an opportunity to interact with her there. And I think it's good to see folks stepping up to get involved.
Councilwoman King votes for Tiffany Walden. Vice Mayor Fire Robin votes for Tiffany Walden. Mayor Young votes for Tiffany Walden. And Councilwoman Powers votes for Tiffany Walden.
All right. Moving right down the agenda, we have no ordinances to be considered this evening on first reading, so we will move on. The next item on our agenda is the second reading of Ordinance 17-5, amending Chapter 54 of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Sawyer, would you please summarize the matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, we're glad to. This item comes to you, it was really brought up initially in the July 25th work session when council was discussing the various boards and commissions and those internal appointments that you make. During that meeting, it was suggested that the Parks and Recreation Commission look at some modification to the membership. It expanded the board from its present membership of 10 to 12, or that is proposed, and that was approved on first reading last month. The additional members, there would be one member appointed that represents city council, and that appointment would be on an annual basis, similar to the other appointments that council makes at their business meeting in August. The second expansion would be an additional student member. The student member would be a rising junior, and would be appointed by the school administration. And that basis of that is their experience and their knowledge of the students. So, if approved on second reading, then city council at your October 24th work session could discuss then the appointment of the council member. And then a request could be made to school administration to offer a second student for consideration. This could be done with a senior to fill out the remaining term, or it could be a current sophomore that would be considered then as a rising junior. But however, however you choose to fill that term for the remainder of the time in office, that would be discussed at your October 24th meeting, pending approval this evening.
Any further questions of staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any member of council like to discuss Ordinance 17-5? All right. Hearing none. The opportunity, the public had an opportunity to comment, is that right, during the public hearing?
No, we didn't have a public hearing.
Sorry about that.
We didn't have to speak to this.
I have my notes off. So, if there is anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please approach the podium and identify yourself. Seeing none, we will move on. Tara, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
All right. Next, resolutions. We have Resolution 17-105 authorizing the guarantee of certain indebtedness of the Tri-Cities Airport Authority and the execution and delivery of an intergovernmental financing agreement. Mr. Sawyer, would you please summarize the matter to the public?
Yes, Mayor, this has been, I guess, a much-discussed topic by the cities of Kingsport, Bristol, and Johnson City, as well as Sullivan County, Tennessee, and Washington County, Tennessee, in support of a very significant regional economic development project. As council is aware, the Tri-Cities Regional Airport has approximately 160 acres on their campus dedicated for the recruitment of aerospace-based industries. They currently have 21 acres that are identified as a certified site. Their Tennessee Economic Development Department Select Tennessee Sites Program. The balance, or approximately 140 acres, is available for future expansion. As council is aware, that there are some typographical concerns that require considerable cut and fill to make this property a developable property, as well as the installation of internal infrastructure and roadways. Site currently has access to a full range of utilities. Electricity and fiber service around the site is provided by Bristol, Tennessee, as central services, and water and sewer service is provided by the city of Johnson City. Over the past several months, staff from the entities that I mentioned earlier, along with airport staff, have finalized an intergovernmental financing agreement for the issuance of $8.5 million of general obligations bonds. The bonds will be used to support the design and construction of the park. It is hoped that these bonds will leverage a 50% matching infrastructure grant that is to be offered this year by the Tennessee Department of Transportation, specifically for aerospace infrastructure. This resolution does authorize the city to enter into the intergovernmental funding agreement, as well as pledge the full faith and credit to service our proportionate share or our per unit share of the debt. That will be 9.35 percent. That was determined by population of the respective entities. The borrowing is expected, the city of Bristol's financial share, and again, this depends on interest rates and so forth, but expected not to exceed $794,750. Again, as I mentioned, this represents a significant opportunity for the region to partner together on a project that we all feel has great economic development potential. And staff urges your support.
Does any member of staff have, any member of council have questions for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 17-105?
Just a statement that's a great regional approach to economic development, and it takes in a large geographical area, so... So, glad we're moving forward with it.
I think this is a great opportunity, and it's also helped, while it's through the authority, we've had some state partners who have been able to help draw some things closer to possibility as we get closer to this grant. I know we've got a couple of our county commissioners with us visiting this evening. They've already voted on their version of this resolution, and we're a couple of organizations behind, but hopefully we'll ratify this tonight and move forward.
I think this is something that will be very meaningful to our tax base because of the types of jobs that it will bring in. Not only will it be meaningful because of the jobs, but population is the name of the game when you come into state, local politics, or revenue streams. And we know that right now in Bristol that we are not where we want to be as far as population, and we are hoping that these jobs will spur our housing market so that we can increase our tax base so that we're better positioned financially. So, it's a multi-step process. It's been years in the making. We would like to thank our state for being there and being supportive of us. We do certainly want to thank the county for stepping out there and being willing to work with other counties, and the amount of money that y'all are putting into this far exceeds what we're putting into it, and I think the county deserves to be recognized for that. So, it's a win-win for everybody, but we have to understand that it's going to cost us to do this, and it's going to cost us on the front end when there are no revenues being collected or gathered. As with anything, we're banking on a return on our substantial investment to help expand our tax base. So, it's a great move for us. It's a great move for the county. It's a great move for the State of Tennessee.
Would any member of the audience like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, I believe we're ready to vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Yes.
Councilman Keane?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Yang?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have Resolution, make sure I've got this in order. Yes. 17-107, amending the City of Bristol Redevelopment Plan for Identified District as Prepared by the Bristol Housing Authority by Creating the West State Street, Stafford Street, Kmart Drive Redevelopment District. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter for the public?
Yes, mayor. This item was presented to you during your work session last week in preparation for this meeting. Resolution 17-107 does establish the West State Street, Stafford Street, Kmart Drive Redevelopment District. The area contains vacant but developable property, certainly at 2854 State Street. This is the location of the old Kmart site. Two residential structures located immediately west of that vacant property. Two vacant properties on Stafford Street. Four vacant lots, fronting on Brown Avenue. One occupied office building and one vacant office building on Bristol College Road, and one vacant former skating rink on Kmart Drive. The area contains 34 acres. The redevelopment plan will allow for the consolidation of these parcels into a feasible commercial development project. The intent through the redevelopment is to offer financial incentives, this is through tax increment financing, for the creation of larger, high-quality commercial development. That is a strategic part of our West State Street Corridor Growth Plan. As council is aware, the initial process of establishing a redevelopment district starts with the housing authority. And they approved this at their August 23rd meeting. And if you, the district or the district identified is illustrated, again, that on the north, is bounded on the north by the southern side of West State Street. It's bounded on the east by the western side of Kmart Drive. Proceeds westerly to Stafford Street and Brown Avenue, and it encompasses those properties that border on the south side of Bristol University, Bristol College Road. Again, a total of approximately 34 acres. There's no projects associated with this plan this evening. Prior to the adoption or the issuing of tax increment financing incentives, those projects would have to come back to the city council, and if the county was to participate, that would also require approval at a county commission.
Does any member of council have a question for staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 17-105?
I think this is a good opportunity to be able to repurpose some area that certainly could use some development, as well as opportunity to potentially incentivize in that immediate area. And this helps prepare and give a better opportunity, but we definitely do have some blight in that vicinity, so it meets all those redevelopment criteria. And I know we've got Mr. Cypher's with us, Executive Director of Bristol Housing. Thank you for being here, and thank you for, they had a very well-attended public hearing around this, when they voted on it, and I think it was probably one of the busier ones, but there were some good questions, had a lot of participation from the public. So, thank staff for being there, housing authority, and the other partners for making sure that many of those questions were answered.
Mayor, if I could add, in conjunction with that comment, we had, during our work session, we proposed two redevelopment districts. We are holding the other redevelopment district. As we looked at that, there was a discrepancy between the narrative and the plan, the illustrated plan, as you see, and that was the expanded or amended green corridor, or the green property, as well as the West State Street corridor. So, we're going to address that discrepancy, bring that back through the housing authority, and then we'll bring that back to you, hopefully, next month.
Before we actually vote on this, this is the perfect time for me to ask the question. You know, we've had the discussion about our tax rate and the impact that TIFs actually has on it. I'd like to hear each of our council members' thoughts in regard to TIFs moving forward, realizing that it does have the potential to impact our tax rate, and so that the public knows exactly where each of us stands in regard to our consideration of TIFs. I think that would be good for the public.
Sure. As this redevelopment plan lays the groundwork for TIF, I know part of what I look at, and I, as our staff looks at this, I'm sure they confirm these things as well, but there's an element of what it brings, whether it's sales tax or jobs, other revenue-related activities. So, those are some of the criteria, but oftentimes, these, as I served on the housing authority several years ago, many of these essentially have to exceed a $2 million investment at a minimum to make it really worth going through all the activities to make a TIF worthwhile. And it's going above that baseline. So, there should be some metrics. I think jobs and some of those tax revenues, especially if it's, for instance, that sales tax generator certainly helps. Similarly, a hotel example would bring a lodging tax. So, those are some of the things that I think really help to make redevelopment more appealing when we look at how we get some of those revenues back until they come on full on the property tax rolls.
So, you would be in support of a TIF under those circumstances?
Yes.
I'd agree with that also, but the question is also too, when using a TIF, is a project going to be viable without the TIF?
That's a great point.
There have been projects that we have been approached about, that we have said no to, especially if a project's already in process, if land has already been bought, started development. So, I think that every TIF may not be appropriate. I think it depends on circumstances.
But for the most part, you would support a TIF?
Of course.
If it met these criteria.
Yes. I think as all of us on city council, if you didn't already know, we've learned what tools are in our toolbox with economic development, and particularly sitting here on the state line, the State of Virginia offers some different things for entities to use that we don't have. So, TIF is one of the tools that we can use. TIF is also looking to the future for what it brings to us in the future with redeveloped areas for both, both for the development itself, as well as just helping our community to be progressive, to look good, to be attractive, to attract other businesses and jobs, and also attractive to the businesses that we have that want to stay here and grow. But I think part of it is that we're becoming more aware of what the cost is in the short term versus the long term. And we're hoping, I hope that we will become more aware of that also at the state level to have some help with interpreting and understanding what it means short term for what we get back with our property taxes, et cetera. So, and sometimes even the things that offset it, they're not the right pots of money that directly offset. So, I think that it would be very helpful if the state helps look at this and sees what kind of impact it's, have it on smaller communities. But I think it's a great tool. It's wonderful to see the different areas that have redeveloped, beginning with Lowe's on Volunteer Parkway, and obviously some of the other areas. So, anyway, I certainly do support it. I do think we have to evaluate it carefully, both for whether it's appropriate, whether it brings the things we want, and also look at what's the cost to our city when it happens.
Well, and just so that I've thrown out there on the record myself, you know, I think TIFs, when used appropriately, that they are essential, especially when used in redevelopment districts. You know, you're exactly right. We have had some that, you know, the building was halfway up, and maybe the financier came back and said, "Oh, wait a minute, I want one of those for my clients," and it was absolutely inappropriate at that point. But it's very costly to develop those areas that have experienced blight. There may be EPA issues, there are just a myriad of issues that come into play. And so, I think that to view TIFs when it comes to blighted areas where they most oftentimes would not be something that your typical developer would want to jump into, I think, is something certainly for us to consider. I do hope that we will continue, as Margaret said, to look at TIFs, but to realize that there is a cost to the TIF, and that while we don't have the immediate realization of the advantage of the TIF, other than in sales tax or in jobs, that we will eventually have that long play as far as property taxes go. Thank you.
I would just emphasize that the criteria for TIF that I think we've looked at is that it's an area, because it's a redevelopment district that we've identified, it's an area that without a TIF, it's probably not going to redevelop, or not anytime soon. So, that's where it makes the big difference, and provides a little bit of advantage to a developer to invest in an area that without it would never increase on the tax rolls without that kind of investment.
And certainly, one of our most recent TIFs that we had would not have, it had a return on investment with the TIF of a little more than 1% when you looked at it from that. But it's redeveloping a property that has not been used in decades. There's anticipated to be some jobs coming into that facility, and we'll see what else they do with the space from there.
I think it's a good thing.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I believe we're ready to vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Farrobin?
Here.
Councilman Keane?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Yang?
Yes.
Speak up over there, we don't think we heard.
I'm here.
All right. Next, we come to Resolution 17-08, delegating the authority under the Border Retail Tourism Development District to Bristol's Industrial Development Board to enter into a development agreement. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter to the public?
This mayor, we'd be glad to. As you were made aware during our September 25th work session, Friendship Properties LLC recently acquired property located at 3192 West State Street, and if we, there we go. This was formerly known as the auto auction, and Friendship Properties desires to repurpose that property into a new automotive sales and service venue. The property is located within the Border Region Retail Tourism District, and that makes it eligible for Chapter 420 funding assistance. In order to take advantage of these incentives, Friendship Properties will need to enter into a development agreement through Bristol's Industrial Development Board. From a statutory standpoint, prior to the IDB entering into an agreement, they must first receive the authorization from the local governing body. Resolution 17-108 provides that authority under the Border Region Tourism District to the Industrial Development Board to enter into development agreement. Project represents a significant opportunity to redevelop what I think most would consider to be a blighted property, and provide new commercial space within the Border Region District. The ability to provide the state's sales tax incentives through the Border Region assistance repurposing this property along this important commercial corridor. I would point out, especially given our last discussion, there is no property tax TIF associated with this development. The incentives are all provided through the Chapter 420 legislation, and that's related to the state sales tax TIF, or the state sales tax increment. Let's keep that TIF out of there.
All right. Does any member of council have a question for staff?
I do. I've received a few phone calls, and so noted, there is no TIF involved, to make that perfectly clear. As far as the sales tax, state sales tax incentive, Mr. Sora, can you speak to what that would actually involve?
Yes, it is. It's a similar formula to that under which the Pinnacle was developed. 75%, you've got 7% on state sales tax. 1% of that goes, the state retains for education purposes, which leaves 6%. 75% of that 6% then is available to the developer for eligible expenses, and eligible expenses, typically the property acquisition, demolition of existing structures, construction of new property, those types of expenditures that would be required to put the new development under roof and open to the public. Similar to, or identical to, the relationship that we have with the Pinnacle partners, of that 75%, 90% of that is retained by the developer, and 10% is returned back to the city, or the city retains prior to sending those funds to the IDB for ultimate distribution to the developer to service the debt associated with that development. Does that cover it?
It does. And then, my next question is that I've been asked, I'm just passing my questions along.
Sure.
What is the projected cost of this project?
Mitch is in the audience. I think that question is probably best addressed in terms of the, in terms of the cost of the project.
You can come on up to the podium if you'd like.
Of course, I don't have the cost at this point. Jim Street's working on the actual cost, but it's about 85,000 square feet, so the math at $150 per square foot would put about $12 million, plus or minus.
And for further clarification, Mr. Sora or Mitch, either one of you wants to speak to this. Usually, if you're within 15 miles of this project, you have a business that's probably within 15 miles of this project, what is it that you're doing that gives you the permission of the state to enter into this?
It's my understanding that the sales area has to be 35% or larger to qualify, which we would qualify. As you know, our facility on the Parkway is kind of substandard, so I think we'll more than qualify the 35% rule.
And you said you thought it was going to come in around 12 million. That's just a...
I mean, yeah, I prefer not to be quoted on that, because I, well, actually, no, because I don't want Jim Street to price it now, but I'm just doing the math, you know.
Right, okay.
We're really in the process of, I've got approval from Volvo, approval from Hyundai, and Ford actually approved me to relocate to the Kmart property one time I thought I was going to acquire, but then they kind of turned down this temporarily, and they're in the process of approving it. So, all the i's aren't dotted and the t's aren't crossed right now, but, you know.
Okay. All that's all. Another question that I had today... Another question that I had today, Mr. Sora, was how will, how, what will the county's participation be in regard to this?
They're not required to participate in it at all. There's, again, there's no property tax TIF associated with this. In fact, there's no local incentives at all associated with this. The, the Chapter 420 legislation deals solely with sales tax increments.
So the advantage is that we'll have a greatly improved, that, a piece of property, a project that does not fall under a TIF so that it would have the property tax at your, at your normal rate?
At your normal rate.
It would be calculated that way. So then the county would get their percentage of the property tax off of that.
Absolutely. And there's also an additional benefit in that the 10% of the sales tax increment does return to the city. If you recall, we've made a substantial investment in that region too. And, and, and you know, even, even though Friendship Properties or, or the old auto auction is not located within the Pinnacle itself, the investment that we've made there draws individuals from outside of our community to that, to that area. So that we, we, we still derive a benefit, Mitch Walters derives a benefit and it's appropriate for us to recover our tenth of that state sales tax increment to help offset our investment there in that, in that, in that exit area.
That article in the paper really set off a lot of phone calls for me today. They, the, one final question that I have is that the properties that are still on the Parkway, what is the intention of those properties?
Well, I was thinking maybe like a junkyard or something maybe? No, no, actually the article helped stir some interest with the local realtor. And I got a call last night that there's a potential developer wanting to look at the property and, but just a call. But that's kind of a plus is the, we would keep one of the buildings to use for a used car center and then we'd be able to market the original Ford store as a property that's available for another business to come to town. And then the land across the street would be available for a development. So of some type, it'd be for sale. So that's kind of the good news. There'd be some other property available that's relatively level to, for some type of development.
Just realize I'm the conduit for the questions. I fully support this and I think it would be a great project. So I think it's something that would be very meaningful for Bristol and for the county. There are, I'm sure, still a lot of moving pieces, but I think it's a good use of our 420 border region.
Good.
Further questions? And I'll have, I'll have to say, because I had a couple of questions for staff, but you've already addressed them. I think it's important...
I'm telling you, my phone has blown up today.
I mean, are there, are there negative comments for any reason? Because we intend for it to be positive. We've got a lot invested in Bristol and want to make it better. So I hope there are not any negative comments out there.
I don't think there were any negatives that came to me. They just, people are just naturally curious of a project of this magnitude and you know, the fact that there isn't a TIF is refreshing.
Right.
A lot of times, you know, we're a little weary. Talking about TIFs, we realize their value, but it's nice that this project doesn't ask for a TIF. There's concern out on the Parkway from other business owners that, you know, that this part of the Parkway could then become blighted.
Right.
And so, you know, just wanting to be sure that, that the properties that are there are not going to fall in disrepair.
Oh, I promise you that wouldn't happen, but hold me to that.
I will.
Mr. Sora, you might add though, I think times of the essence on the, on the 420 district, because it's my understanding that any building has to happen within a four-year period.
The remaining, the remaining timeline, yes.
So this might be the last chance to, I, I, I really couldn't do this project without the 420. And we could put a dealership there, but not to the magnitude that we're planning on doing. So you know, any other properties that are in that district, you know, we need to do all we can to market them under this tax agreement to, to get that done. So, all right.
Thank you very much. If you want to, you can, you can have a seat, but if we do have another question or two, we might, we might reserve the right to call you back up, all right?
Right. I, I've got some gentlemen in from out of town that are looking at the country club, so.
Any other questions?
Just let me know where I can go. I'll wait till you leave.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion?
A second.
All right. Would any member of the council, of council like to comment on Resolution 17108?
I'll just add, just for information, that I always find it odd that we have Industrial Development Board that does some things that really aren't industry. So just to note that that's, the name comes because of state, the state tells us what we can call it. We'd like to, we prefer Economic Development Council or something that more describes what that group does, but we're required to call it an industrial development side, correct?
That sounds right. That sounds good.
One of the ones we call the housing authority helps to develop TIFs and other incentives. And people are always confused, they think that the housing authority is involved, that we've got housing going on.
Right, right.
Very true. I, a couple of elements that we hit on, I think it's important. We've recognized that the criteria of expanding a nearby business within fifteen miles more than thirty-five percent, it hits that criteria. Just the ballpark number that Mr. Walters referred to is a significant investment and he also alluded to the, the ability to escalate what he can do there with the Border Region dollars. And I think that speaks to some great opportunity for, for that on the whole and, and certainly justifies it. And I think if we look at some of the other areas that have consolidated like he's trying to work out with several franchisers, I think that's a, a challenge in and of itself to get them to come along and say, yes, I'm, I'm agreeing to put multiple franchisees, or one franchisee with multiple brands in the same building. That's, that's enough of a challenge, but I appreciate your investment and look forward to moving this on. Other comments? All right. We're ready for the vote. Tara, please call the roll. Oh, I need to ask for a public comment. Would any member of public like to comment on this Resolution 17108? Seeing none? Tara, I think we're ready for the vote. We have one? Certainly. Yes, please.
Thank you.
Sandra Grubbs, 112 Wonder Valley Road, Bristol, Tennessee. My question would be to Mitch, to, to really understand this, in totality, you are going to move everything you have on the Parkway to the new, to where the auto auction is? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, all the new car franchises, correct. And then we can keep one of the buildings for a used car sale.
So how many places are we talking that you're going to vacate?
Well, all the property, the lane only. It would be, you know, we're causing, probably on Phillipsville Road, that would be empty lane, no cars on it. And then most likely the building on the hill, the original Ford store, we have on the market for sale. We keep the Hyundai building in this park.
I think this seems like a mixed bag. You have an opportunity for a very fine establishment to be, take place in where the auto auction was, which is indeed blighted. I guess my concern is what happens on the Parkway? Because I think the Parkway has quite a few struggles of its own. That's my comment.
And the, the question that was posed to Mr. Walters was what would be moved in totality? Would, just for the record, would you be able to come up and state that so that everyone can hear?
Certainly, we plan to move the new car franchises for Ford, Volvo and Hyundai. And that would leave two, that would leave one, two, three, four buildings. There's a building up on the hill that, that we would have open to use at our auction. And we would keep two of the buildings where the Hyundai service, Hyundai sales are, we would turn that into a used car sales facility. Because I don't want to abandon it either, because we have twenty, some years of customers coming by there. Wouldn't be too good for them to pop in one day and see it empty. So we can still market used cars there. But that would leave all the land, you know, ten or eleven acres across the street available and abandoned, I guess, but for sale. And the original Ford store at 1855 Volunteer Parkway would be repurposed by me if I could figure something out, but if not, it would be for sale for somebody else to use. I don't like abandoned buildings either, you know, but if I can think of a business, I'll put it in. But the best we've came up for right now is a doggy daycare center, so, possible.
Thank you very much.
I don't, well, I like things to be purposed as well, so we'll be sensitive to that. Thanks.
Very good. All right. Any further discussion? Any other citizens for comment? Seeing none? Tara, I believe we're ready for the vote this time. Please call the, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Appreciate your time. All right. Next we have Resolution 17109, authorizing the acceptance of an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Virginia Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, a couple of months ago, I made council aware that we had received a verbal response that, from Tennessee Department of Transportation, that we were successful on our grant application for sidewalks along Virginia Avenue, better known as Virginia Avenue Pedestrian Improvements. If we could pop that, the, as, as you recall, the, the grant, the grant application involved extending five-foot wide sidewalks, I think it's five foot in width, is correct there, on, on both sides of Virginia Avenue from the limits of the East Cedar Street Construction Project, which would bring the, the sidewalks just past the Gas and Go and CVS area of Virginia Avenue. This particular grant would extend the sidewalks south of Hazelwood Street to a point where they connect with the existing sidewalk system that's there adjacent to the Bristol Housing Authority property. What you have before you this evening is, is an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation and, and the accompanying resolution authorizes the approval of that agreement. And of course, obviously it has a funding element to it. The total project cost is estimated to be six hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. The Tennessee Department of Transportation is responsible for eighty percent of that project. The City of Bristol, Tennessee is responsible for twenty percent or one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The issue is before you this evening is the, and as is stated in Resolution 17109, is authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Tennessee Department of Transportation to advance the project.
All right. Would any member of council like to ask questions to staff? All right. Hearing none? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 17109?
When will this be accomplished?
I, I would, would guess. Projects, quite frankly, this one is, is moving along quicker than, than some of our other projects. But that doesn't mean that we're going to have sidewalks out there in two years. Typically, it is a protracted process in dealing with this. These are, are generally federal funds that are passed through the Tennessee Department of Transportation and, and they have a significant criteria of compliance requirements that go along with that, that, that does, it does prolong the implementation. But where the journey has begun.
Yeah, so we're commenting or questioning? Comment.
Comments, discussion.
So I think the price is pretty pricey, so I think it's important for people to understand it's not just putting in concrete, that there's also moving some utilities around and there's a lot involved particularly in this area. And it will connect with Cedar Street that will be redone. Hopefully it'll come close, follow that or about the same time. And I know, I know I've said in work sessions probably here also that very frequently when I travel that area, people are walking in the grass, they're walking in the street, they're pushing baby buggies. It is a very heavily pedestrian area without, are providing the infrastructure for people to safely travel. So I am absolutely thrilled and also with the Cedar project that's going to have sidewalks that hopefully will encourage more people to walk, that this will be a great addition to get people into that retail section from the residential part. So I think that this is a great enhancement. It's also public safety. It's infrastructure that's important for cities to provide, so I'm very, very excited about it.
Any further comments? All right. Would any member of our audience like to address counsel on this issue? All right. Seeing none? I believe we're ready to, for the vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
All right. This brings us to our consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, first we have the minutes of the September 5th, 2017 call city council meeting. We have the minutes of the September 5th, 2017 city council meeting. We have the minutes of the September 26th, 2017 city council work session. We have Resolution 17110, a resolution authorizing the purchase of in-car video systems with body cameras. Resolution 17111, a resolution awarding bid for the purchase of refuse containers. Resolution 17112, a resolution awarding bid for wastewater treatment plant, final clarify or replacement. Resolution 17113, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to Tennessee Department of Transportation for a Tennessee Alternatives grant, program grant. Resolution 17114, resolution awarding a bid for the purchase of the solid waste collection knuckle boom. Resolution 17115, a resolution adopting infrastructure design standards for the City of Bristol, Tennessee. And Resolution 17116, a resolution adopting a residential water and sanitary sewer materials policy.
All right. Would council like to remove any items on the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none? Is there a motion to take action?
I have a question. Can I ask a question without removing it?
Absolutely.
The R17116?
Yes.
Is that what we talked about?
It is.
Okay.
It is, yes.
In our work session, would you?
Yes, it is. I'd be glad to.
Can we just stand that a little bit, because not everybody's...
Yeah, I'd be glad to, be glad to. This is, is an incentive policy. To address a couple of things, you heard Councilwoman Powers earlier this evening talk about residential development and the desire for, for, for expanding housing opportunities. This is an incentive program that will provide for the material costs only of water and sanitary sewer. Providing ample funds are available in the fund reserves for both the water segment and the sanitary sewer segment of, of the water and wastewater fund. The, the developer would certainly submit plans to our city engineer. City engineer then would determine the, the material that was eligible for reimbursement. And typically on the water side, that's six-inch or larger ducted line water mains, the appropriate valves and fire hydrants. On the sanitary sewer side, that would be eight-inch in diameter sanitary sewer main and manholes. All other materials such as backfill material, the labor to, to install it, all other material would be the responsibility of the developer. Once the, once the, the utility has been installed and has passed the satisfactory inspections from our building inspectors, or our construction inspectors, then the, initially, let me back up. Initially, the, the developer would post either a cash bond or an irrevocable bond to, to secure the, the funding of it. Once the, the utility is accepted, then the bond will be released and the city would recover their cost through the, the charging of appropriate tap fees. This is, we, we hope to use this as an incentive to, we don't have a lot of developable property within the city... within the city, and we hope that this will, will be an incentive to help us expand our borders for those seeking opportunities to develop residentially along with the, with the sanitary sewer extensions.
Thank you.
We've already got a motion. Did we get a motion? Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, since we had a little bit there? All right. Ready for the vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Okay. Vice Mayor Fire Robin?
Yes.
Councilman Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
Yes.
All right. Brings us to the, towards the end of our agenda, and first is our Board of Education liaison report. This evening, we have School Board Member Jill Harrison with us, who's the Chair of the Board of Education, and she's here to make a special presentation for us.
Thank you for allowing me to be with you tonight. People before me were a little bit taller. Thank you. So I want to bring lots of good news about what's going on in the schools. We still have data coming in. The Tennessee Department of Education has not been able to provide all the test results from last year. It's been fairly constant over the past few years, so we weren't too surprised. However, what we do have is information relative to Tennessee High School. And one huge win for us this year, on a scale of one to five, Tennessee High scored all fives in all subject areas. And that's based on growth. That's Tennessee Value Added Assessment System, T V O S for short, one of our acronyms. And we were recognized by the Secretary of Education, our Commissioner, in one of her weekly presentations for being in the top 10% for areas that you can see on the screen. What we converted to, I think it was two years ago, rather than having an Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II course path in math, we have converted to an Integrated Math I, II and III course. And studies have shown that high schools with this type of math course progression pull in Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II all three years across the board, so that when students start to take their ACT and their SATs, they score better because they've had all of the math principles, as opposed to breaking it apart into three pieces. And as you'll note, we were number one in the state in Integrated Math. Now, some schools are still on the traditional Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, but out of those that are converted, we were number one in the state in Math I, and we were number two in the state in Math II. Also, Tennessee High and TOPPS, which is our Tennessee Online Public School, was recognized, again, by the Commissioner of Education for U.S. Civics. All of our seniors who graduated in 2017 passed the U.S. Civic Score. Johnson City didn't do that. Dobbin's Bennett didn't do that. Other schools in Washington County didn't do that. I think Volunteer in Hawkins County and Johnson County High School were the two schools around our area that passed this. So a reason for our students to be proud of what they've accomplished and our teachers. And one thing that I wanted to just mention, because I was so proud of this, we recently held the Regional School Boards Association Meeting in Kingsport, and it's our district of East Tennessee. And we were asked, every school board, stand up and identify one factor that you believe has led or will lead to an improvement in your academic achievement in your school system. And that's always a good time for us to share, you know, what's going on. And I wanted to just mention a few things, because we're already doing these things. We've had them in place. So someone mentioned, we've hired a STEM teacher, one STEM teacher. We've done that. We're past that. They mentioned professional learning communities. We've got that. We've done that. We're building on that. Adopting Canvas and Schoology, their software systems that are used by school districts, we've had it. We're using it. One system was especially proud because they were going to buy tablets that their students could use at high school. We're the first district in the state, 144 districts in this state, the first to provide a laptop computer for grades four through 12. Little old Bristol, Tennessee. It's not an inexpensive project. It requires constant purchasing of laptops to replace. Our teachers jumped in, Andy Arnold, Director of Technology, spearheaded. We've had to improve infrastructure so that we have Wi-Fi in our old buildings, but we were the first in the state to do that. So there were a number of things that were brought up by 20, 30, some other school districts, and I was really pleased to be able to say, we're already doing that. So I didn't have very many notes that I took home with me from that night on things I thought we should try to work, work on. So I ran into Councilman Keen on Saturday, and he asked me, now, there's not much going on in CTE at Tennessee High, is there? And I said, you'll have to wait till Tuesday night to find out, because that's absolutely one of the things that I wanted to bring up. You're probably familiar with the Work Ready Community project. It was initially a push by Sullivan County through Networks, and it is now being spearheaded by the First Tennessee Development District. So Work Ready Community, this is basically being pushed by employers, by various economic development agencies across the country. This is not just a Tennessee or East Tennessee push that's being made. Of the 95 counties in Tennessee, 11 have been certified as a Work Ready Community, and 21 are participating. Basically, there are three essential skills that are required in order to pass the National Career Ready Certificate, N C R C. In order to get that certificate, you have to take the ACT Work Keys. That's a completely different test from your ACT college prep course, I mean, college prep test that you have to take. And I'm, I'm glad to say that what we're pushing to do, and we plan to do, is have those students who are in Senior English take the ACT Work Keys test. Now, by Senior English, I mean, it is not all seniors. It is not AP Lit, AP Lang, it's not the Honors English, but it's those students that we have, that we believe will be looking to become career-ready following high school, or moving into a career, I mean, a technical school. If they pass the test and they receive the certification, Eastman Chemical Company and other employers are committing to automatically provide an interview to that person, if they can show that they have the certification. And on average, the individuals with that certification have been receiving a salary that's approximately $7,000 more than other individuals who have not shown that they could have those skills and pass that test. Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services has been very supportive, sponsoring the curriculum for this program. And also, the United Way has stepped up to cover fees for the test for our students, because some of the students that are in that program, that are looking to move into a vocational position, they may not have the money to be able to pay for the testing. So we're very grateful to both of those entities for their involvement. We have received from the Tennessee Department of Education, a CTE equipment award of $128,000. And the three specific areas you can see that we are going to spread this money over are areas in which employers have come to our CTE personnel and said, we need skilled labor. And so we're trying to focus on these three specific areas. The equipment that's going to be purchased in these areas are going to provide additional dual enrollment, dual credit opportunities for our students above and beyond what's already being offered today. So we're very grateful to receive this money from the Tennessee Department of Education. We are very, very blessed to have many partners in Bristol that work with Tennessee High School and our students. And basically, this is an opportunity for me to say thank you, and also share this information with city council. Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services provides, or sponsors, Career and Industry Day. And at this event, we had about 30 teachers from Tennessee High School tour and shadow in roughly 20 Bristol businesses. So this allows teachers to see skills that are needed, the knowledge that needs to be learned, and allows them to look at their curriculum, so they can strengthen it to move toward our mission. We've had this partnership with Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services for more than 20 years, so we're especially grateful to them for continuing to work with us. We've also partnered with the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department, and I can't see to see if Mr. Spurgis is still here, but they have worked with our Career and Industry Day for the Health Sciences Program, looking at preparing students to enter emergency medical services field. Then also, our Bristol, Tennessee Police Department has taken students through the Training Simulator, or in our Criminal Justice Program. At the Pinnacle, Steve Johnson has done a behind-the-scenes tour, interview, skillset with students in our business programs. And Bristol Chamber of Commerce also has participated in our workforce development partnership by setting up tours of local businesses. Then Electro-Mechanical has also allowed tours for our students, showing them positions that can be obtained at their place of business, skills that are necessary for it. So we have many businesses in our own city agencies who are stepping up to the plate and working with our students. And while this isn't an industry-specific partnership, Northeast State Community College has an entertainment, technology, sound and lighting certificate that students can receive. And so we have a dual enrollment, dual credit relationship with their program. And this coming way, we believe we're going to have almost 20 students who will graduate from high school with that certificate in hand. And to see some of what goes on, if you go to the Tennessee High School page, you can click on the morning's announcements, and you'll see a three-to-five-minute program that is created totally by students. We have a producer, they have a sound person, they have the camera person, the teleprompter person. Someone looks at what event you want to put on, someone coordinates the music. It's totally a student-created presentation, and it's a great opportunity for students to get some confidence in public speaking and public presentation, besides everything that goes along with the underlying program. We are very, very proud of some of the renovations that have taken place recently, especially at Tennessee High School. In the upper-left corner, you will see the new Frank Winston Auditorium. That was at a cost of $1.6 million. $1.6 million. We had a very generous contribution from Mr. Bill Gattin, when he honored his lifelong friend Frank Winston, and he contributed $400,000. $400,000. That took my breath away. We've also, you can see the workers. You don't like to have a building, you don't like to have a house where you have a bathroom that's 50 years old. Nobody in here wants that. Our students didn't want that. So we spent $690,000 this past summer in renovating bathrooms in the main part of Tennessee High, and then also on one side of Viking Hall, because we couldn't afford to do it all. We hoped to do the left side of Viking Hall next year, but that's going to be up in the air. Then you will see below, lower-left-hand, that's the new Tennessee High School Swimming Pool Center. Those renovations are at a cost of $1.8 million total. We had swimmers who were swimming with insulation falling on their heads during meets. We had leaks in the basement around the swimming pool equipment that would have put our folks in the water department to shame, seeing what was going on. It was necessary to put on a new roof. A lot went into this. And then, in the lower-right corner, we recently paved Haynesville Parking Lot. That was a cost of $250,000. That's the amount of the CapEx line item that we had from the city. So thank you to the city for funds that allowed us to pave a parking lot at one of our schools. I've had questions from citizens in Bristol about how the city can give $44,000, $44 million, $45 million to city schools. So I thought it would be very helpful to break this down, because we do not receive $44 million from the city, as y'all well know, because you look at the budget all the time. We've put the line items here for what we see from the federal, the state of Tennessee, Sullivan County, Bristol, Tennessee, and then there are other items that are sort of miscellaneous. From the City of Bristol, Tennessee, the line item is $4.64 million. We are required to pay back $777,000 each year, so it's a net of roughly $3.87 million. The $777,000 is where we ask to put energy-efficient systems in some of the schools. So we pay that back every year to make the schools that are owned by the city more efficient, to try to reduce our energy bills. What's, what's important for us in the line items, there are two pieces we're going to have, that we're going to draw down our fund. The first is the $1,050,000 that we did not receive from the county. We have elected to take that out of our reserve fund. To do otherwise, we would have to eliminate positions mid-year, and we would have to eliminate programming. That's not fair to our teachers, our staff, our students. So we have elected, and we're very, very fortunate to have the money, to be able to cover the $1,050,000. We do plan to reduce our budget next year, which will require us to look at an elimination of positions and elimination of programs for our students, unless we find a funding somewhere else. Also, the $2.2 million is the one-time drawdown to cover the capital improvements that we are paying for out of our reserve fund. So what we have learned that we've had to do over the years is build up some money so we can do these big projects, and then we pay it out. So I've had some folks say to me, you've got $11 million or $10 million in your reserve fund. Well, come see me after we pay out $2.2, and after we absorb $1,005,000. We're going to be down pretty close to what we have to maintain. So there are not funds in here to be able to pay back debt that the city might incur on behalf of the school board, or school system. And it's also interesting to me, I always like to look at other cities to see what they're doing, and so in local funding from Kingsport, City of Kingsport contributes on a net basis, you have to do some apples and oranges, and did the best I could with these numbers, but they contribute $10 million, a little over $10 million to the City of Kingsport Schools. That's roughly 13% of their general purpose budget. Johnson City, City, contributes roughly $12.7 million to their school systems budgets. That's almost 18% of their general purpose budget. And the City of Johnson City also covers many of their capital improvement projects, roof replacements, energy improvements, other funds directly, and they do not require the school systems to pay that back. So, and lastly, we are adopting and trying to promote the new branding for the City of Bristol. Our mission is to ensure that our students are college and career-ready through academic excellence, so we will use our logo and copy the city and indicate that we're for academic excellence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. You said that Kingsport contributes 13% of their budget, Johnson City close to 12.7% of their budget.
Yeah, these are Jill Harrison numbers, where I took their budgets. They, they have line items that are a little different from ours, so...
But these are approximations.
And Johnson City was 18%.
Johnson City is 18.
12.7 million.
Yeah, just under 18% for the City of Johnson City.
And so what is ours in proportion to our budget?
8.6, 8%, something like that, once you take the net that we're required to pay back. Now granted... Now granted, they do have more schools than we do, but they don't have triple the schools that we do. Thank you.
And were a lot of those funds going towards capital improvements that the cities were putting towards that?
I'm sorry, what now?
In Kingsport and Johnson City, were a lot of those funds going towards capital improvements to schools?
It was eighteen, it was eighteen percent of their general-purpose budget, which would not have been CapEx or new schools. Yeah, I went with the general-purpose budget numbers. So we have apples to oranges. We have apples to apples instead of apples to oranges.
Because if it was the general purpose, maybe you can't include the capital in that.
Thank you very much, Chair Harrison. That brings us to our city managers' report.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff and city council for the support for the Rhythm and Roots Festival. And the staff spent untold hours from Public Works, Parks and Rec, police and fire, and the staffing involved, and putting on what was what I think most have recognized as being a very, very fun weekend. And the crowds were good, the music was good. I know you all volunteered a number of hours in and around the venues, and just to express my appreciation to all of you. I do have some dates and some activities coming up for the remainder of the month, in early November, that I would like for you to note. First, this Thursday, we have our Transit Ridership Appreciation Day. That commences at eleven a.m. at our downtown center. Come by, and some hot dogs and hamburgers and a little bit of music, and I think the downtown community as well as our transit riders enjoy that day. We also waive our transit fees for that day. Tuesday, October the tenth, will be a public meeting to advance the Bluff City Highway, Edgemont Avenue Pedestrian Improvement Project grant application. That you approve the application and the consent agenda this evening. Prior to us submitting that application, we're required to have a public meeting. This will be held at Haynesville Elementary School, and I think it starts at five?
Five thirty.
Five thirty, and we're there at seven, something like six thirty, seven, something like that. And that, I think, our Community Relations Department is providing that information to our community. On Thursday, October twelfth, we have a pre-opening celebration at the Nature Center at six p.m., and that's followed Friday, October thirteenth, with the ribbon cutting of the Nature Center expansion at three p.m. On Tuesday, October seventeenth, we have our annual Boards and Commissions Reception that will commence at five thirty. This will be in the Bruton Smith Building at Bristol Motor Speedway, their third-floor venue. On Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, you'll have, we'll have our regular work session at five thirty. And then lastly, on Thursday, November the second, we'll have our second community workshop for a comprehensive plan, and that will be held at six p.m. in our auditorium here.
And you said it would start at what time?
Six p.m. At the Slater Community Center Auditorium, where we sit now.
Very good. As you can tell, many things coming up. Before we jump into city council comments, let me take a moment and recognize several of our notable guests tonight. First of all, from our county commissioners, we have County Commissioner Mark Vance and County Commissioner Angie Stanley. We also have Dr. Gary Lilly, who is here with Chairman of the Board of Education Jill Harrison, who you heard from earlier. We have Chamber of Commerce Chair Beth Reinhardt. And then we also have Bristol Housing Executive Director Steve Seifers. Then also, we have, from Bristol Baseball, Malin Luttrell. And then, I think, who have I missed, guys? I think we've, and then we've got a variety...
Did you mention that?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I did this month, I forgot to last month. And then we've got some other folks in attendance with us. Thank you for joining us. We're going to move into city council comments.
Just real quick, we say, had a great presentation today about passenger rail that Margaret put on. It was very well done, a lot of good information in that. I think a lot of our citizens would be interested to see just what the impact has been just north of us, in the Lynchburg Quarter, now opening up into Roanoke. I hope Margaret mentions a little something about that today. Had some good information, had some really good information last month about the equalization rate and how TIPS affect that. So I really do hope that we get more in-depth with our state legislators and our comptroller's office to really tell us what, you know, how that affects us. I think it's great information that you brought forward last month. Also, you know, housing incentives. What is on the state radar that would allow us to do any type of housing incentives in the future, too? So I hope that's two things that we can investigate. And I'll just say, it was a great Rhythm and Roots. I don't know what the numbers were at this point, but it seemed like it was, that the numbers were really extremely high, so that's all I have.
Well, in regard to Rhythm and Roots, we've been told that our numbers are up. We haven't released the exact numbers just yet, but we've been told that they are up. Let's see, there was that. As far as the housing starts, you know, as I mentioned earlier, population is everything, and, you know, that's one way that we can certainly grow our way into an even better position with our tax revenues. I'm glad that you thought that my investigation last month was good, because I've investigated a little bit more, and I guess from now until we talk about the tax rate again, I'll have a tidbit for you. The TCA sixty-seven-five-seventeen-oh-one is the legislation that actually states the certified tax rate. And I found it very interesting in my due diligence, I have spoken with some state legislatures as well as others from the state of Tennessee. And another word for this particular piece of legislation is called the truth in taxation. And the reason for its development was so that the state would take into account all revenue streams, and it would then be the obligation and responsibility of the local council or county commission to share with the community how that certified tax rate was established. I brought a little something to just share. Once a certified rate is calculated by the assessor and chief executive of the tax jurisdiction and reviewed by the State Board of Equalization, it is submitted to the jurisdiction's governing body for formal determination. In this instance, it would be the Bristol Tennessee Council, City Council. Usually for consideration with budget, which I found the next part of this to be very interesting, because the certified tax rate should be reflective of the budget and vice versa, the budget should be reflective of the certified tax rate. Right now, we're upside down on that, quite honestly. If the budget will require an increase above the certified rate, the governing body must publish notice of a public hearing on whether to exceed the certified rate, and then may proceed to adopt an actual tax rate after the hearing. If the certified tax rate is exceeded, the jurisdiction will then send the State Board of Equalization an affidavit of publication for the hearing notice and a certified copy of the final tax rate ordinance or resolution. And I know a lot of times people aren't interested in hearing this word for word, but I think it's important that we understand the legislation under which we are to operate. So if the value increased less than the average, the tax bill may actually be lower in a reevaluation year compared to the year before. What, giving us a tax-neutral rate? Procedurally, the tax rate should reflect the demands of the budget, and the budget was set first. So we actually know or knew the demands of the budget, so that there is a balance of revenue, or revenue-neutral tax assessment and collection. So I think that unfortunately, right now, you know, we have a tax rate that does not reflect our budget, and, you know, then, so where does that leave us? And we've talked about the TIPS and how that affects us. Going back and recalculating, and, you know, let me first of all say, I don't profess to know everything there is about this. I do profess that I have spent a lot of time, a lot of time, looking at this. I have two concerns in regard to the establishment of our tax rate, which is, of course, the lifeblood of any municipal, county, state, or federal government. It's the collection of revenues which are returned to its population in the form of services. It's not that we're collecting these revenues and just sitting on them. We're collecting them, and we're returning them in the form of services, whether they are immediately returned in the short term, or whether, as Ms. Harrison said, they're collected over a period of time so that larger projects can then be put into play for the citizens that it serves. In the form of services set at such a rate as to not create or incur a deficit. So what we've done is we have established a budget, and then we have approved a tax rate where we knowingly approved a tax rate where we would incur a deficit. One part of this that creates this deficit are TIPS. You know, we get a lot of other things off of TIPS, but it does negatively impact our tax rate in that they are revenues that we won't actually receive. So my concern, you know, that's one concern. The other concern that I have is long-term negative impact. We've talked tonight about TIPS and how valuable they can be under the right circumstances, and I think we've all agreed, and we've made that known, that we would support them under the right circumstances. But it can force us to have a certified tax rate that is below that level at which our budgets do not reflect a deficit. So what do we do? Well, I've gone back and looked, I've talked with several people as to where we could place our tax rates so that we are not in a knowing deficit position right off the bat. And I do know that we have already completed, what, the boards? What is it that we've already completed, Tara?
The...
On Friday, you said it was completed.
Oh, we have the tax rolls from the state.
We have the tax rolls from the state.
Correct.
And so if we were to enter into any kind of an amendment to our tax rate that would take into consideration the TIPS value, we could, my understanding is that we could do that, but that we would have to consider the cost of what has been done, which is about two thousand dollars.
I think the timing would be the obstacle, Councilwoman, in that the tax bills are due to go out this month, and they're due back, according to our charter, they're due back on January the fifth.
Right, but they haven't been printed yet.
But prior to establishing the tax rate, you would have to have two readings of your ordinance.
Even if we amended the current tax rate?
Yes, yes. And you would have to advertise it along with a public hearing, as such.
Well, just for general information, we could take, if our tax rate went to two point two oh, two twenty and a half, that will take into account the deficit that we will experience because of the TIPS. And so I was going to ask tonight, because, you know, I think, I think what we have sitting in front of us tonight are very concerned council members, every one of us. I think everyone sitting here wants to be sure that we're not operating at a deficit. But I think that we have knowingly adopted a tax rate, and we knew that it was going to create a deficit, and I am disappointed about that. You know, we can't do anything about it now. So where do we go from here? Well, we deal with what we've got, and may or may not have to revisit it next year. But I appreciated your comments, Chad, in the fact that, you know, to keep looking at this, to be sure that we are on the right path. I had someone stop me on Friday, and, you know, and I found the comment to be concerning, and it's someone that you know very well. And they said, you know, they said, "In other communities, this was how it began. There was one misstep, and in trying to correct that, there was another misstep, and another misstep, and another misstep, until they found themselves incredibly in debt." And I just, I don't want us to make any missteps. And I do believe that the tax rate that we've adopted is a mistake, but, you know, I'm a team player, it's passed, can't do anything about it, so on will go. But I do want this to be in the forefront of our minds. The certified tax rate, its intent, based on TCA, was for truth in taxation and for us to be very clear as to how and why those revenues are being spent. So I appreciate everybody's help. I think we had a great work session. Jack, you did a great job. And I think we're, we'll continue to move forward, but I don't think we're finished with this just yet. Thank you.
I'll switch gears a little bit. I'll also say thank you for Rhythm and Roots, to everybody who participated. So I have a few announcements and then a couple of comments. And the Domestic Violence Month, we also have Domestic Violence Week, the Week Without Violence, well, Week Without Violence that the YWCA sponsors and tries to advertise different events, et cetera. And personally, reading the proclamation, it is quite shocking, and listening to Karen about what our stats are here is quite eye-opening. So, and really, also, I think we said it, but really think our police department is dangerous work. I think some of the most dangerous things that they face are with domestic violence. So just for us to all keep in mind, and to support the programs we have that are doing their best. And with that, also, United Way started their campaign, and Abuse Alternatives is one of their agencies. Also, Beth Reinhardt laughed, but wanted to say thanks for the Young Professionals Group that just was announced with our chamber. I think we need to really nurture and support and give our young adults opportunities to get together, to figure out where their role is in our community, how they can give back. Pretty exciting. Wildlife Weekend is the thirteenth and fourteenth, and we've already talked about the ribbon cutting for the Nature Center, and I saw it for the first time in several months. I hope in two weeks that it'll be almost ready, but it's going to be awesome. So invite people to come out anytime that weekend, ribbon cutting's at three o'clock, but anytime that weekend or after, it's going to be open, and I think Snappy gets moved in another week. If you don't know who that is, that's a snapping turtle that's...
How big, Terry?
Huge. A large turtle that's a favorite of everybody, so we're hoping that Snappy likes the new environment as well. And on that Saturday, go to the Fire Department and then Steel Creek Park to do both those. Chad mentioned passenger rail. We tried to do a little bit to promote and hoping to do more. Roanoke will be having a ceremony on October thirtieth, and their first rail service in however many years to DC will be on the thirty-first. So that's exciting. We feel like that's one step closer to rail here in Bristol. We still have a long way to go, but we all need to be talking about it and encouraging all our different legislators to pay attention, to know what's going on, and be ready to do some funding. Comment on, we have several big things that we want to be sure we have budgets for, that really are changing the face of our community in really positive ways. We had two of them on, two things on our agenda, well, we had more than that, but anyway, two of the things are sidewalks, the one on Virginia Avenue, and then Mr. Sore referred to the hearing for Bluff City Highway going from Lavender Lane to connect with the sidewalks Tennessee High. That's for a grant to apply for those funds. We certainly hope we can get those. But those sidewalks will, along with the Cedar Street improvements, will completely change and really improve those areas of our community for what it looks like and also does a service for our community. Also, TIP and redevelopment changes the face of our community with some new opportunities and how things look. And lastly on that is our schools facilities plan. As decisions made for where Vance is going to be, that's a new face on our community. We certainly need, very desperate for a new middle school, and that will also do a whole lot. And then the last thing, I just wanted to not ignore... And then the last thing I just wanted to not ignore is what happened in Las Vegas. And conversations also, besides our hearts and prayers being there, are also fear for ourselves here. And try not to make political statements, and personally, I don't think it's political. But my strong feeling is that there has to be more regulation of automatic weapons. And until that happens, that we're going to see more and more tragedies like this. And that in support of that, the majority of polls show that the majority of the American people support more regulation for automatic weapons. So anyway, that's my statement. And we'll just go back to say a lot of exciting things happening here in Bristol and appreciate a council that spends a lot of time talking about stuff, so appreciate it.
Two highlights tonight that I'd just like to reiterate. Aerospace Park, that's about jobs, a regional project about jobs. And that's coming. There's a few more hoops to jump through, if you will, to get things through so that grant proceedings can progress. And hopefully, we'll see that we have been successful in being awarded that grant once it comes through. And it's a, it's a big step to be able to come up with that 50% match from all the partners to be able to put in their prorated portion. So thank you to the county for taking that up first and then the other partners that are there with the airport authority to do so. The second, locally, right here in the city limits, the residential incentives. And let me reiterate, it's not just within city limits. It's also some of those, what we call the urban growth boundaries, some of those areas just outside the city limits that could be, could be annexed with the current means, whether that's by consent or referendum. But it's so much easier when you see the kind of incentives that were briefly expanded upon tonight and what those can mean to adding more residents. That could add some, some new students or additional students to our school systems. Those are real opportunities, and it addresses both the housing part and the jobs part. So glad to see council taking those on. And in a similar vein, we recently, staff was able to help host the Tennessee Housing Development Agency, THDA. And they chose to come up to Bristol and have their, I guess it's a quarterly board meeting. And so it was a good opportunity for us to meet some of them and speak with, spend some time learning about some of the additional programs that we might be able to utilize more here or understand some more about some of those things we weren't aware of beyond home consortium and some of those other opportunities which are geared towards particular population segments. So great opportunities. We have more coming. And I want to close with thanking the school board again for hosting us with MGT as they presented their concluding statements. It's, there's a lot of information in there. And I appreciate the consultants' work, appreciate the, all the work that Dr. Lilly and staff and the Board of Education has put in. And I know there's more, but part of our partnership with them is to help communicate the plan as that's formalized. So I know we'll be hearing more from Ms. Harrison and some of the others from the school board as you'll be hearing more from us as that roadmap, as it continues to unfold. So with that said, we will adjourn.